Before parliament, sorry, before council of ministers. Now here, one first one, I mean tourism. I think by help him, you may plan the tool side blow. All questions where he stop come out now here, I mean blow. A side blow on trust fund, blow marketing especially contribution to private sector. Look coming, blow help him recurrent where government is stop came, parliament, you bless the approval me every year. He got one effort, he stop corner here before come, you should be discussed before DCO this morning. Got narvula two, low side blow Van Aipo, low side blow trademarks, what them all copyright low. And mere interest blow, you mean low Vanuatu, no pleasure. Latchly blow protect them all businesses play me with them all trade, all services, all activities where all is stop carrom out. No pleasure, they touch them all markets overseas too. Low protect them all products, low get them, or protect them all interests, well, he got. Low all different type low business only register from no pleasure. And he got one way, one other important bill where discussions start taking place too, blow he happen. And mere blow answer him question, blow a member chairman, and me issue blow process bargain. State law office, he come out with them one policy direction recently. The last six months, last twelve months, he tell him say, every ministry must got one legislative calendar. And any bill where you want them processing, blow he call it come, blow he carry approval, blow he come the parliament, he must have inside low calendar, blow you blow twelve months here. And suppose he minister have inside from only understanding, blow me, I mean understanding no more. Chairman say, from only work with them, full of different ministries, with them every agency here. With them drafting unit, low get only one name, say you may plan them. All arrangements, blow bills with them, you may prioritize them, you may want them, only go come, he must approve them, oh geta. Drafting instructions, he must come low come, control low DCO, we call low come, so. Process here, and me take him time too. And then me fault town low calendar, blow state law office. And one example, low last Friday, you may stop blow one public forum, low warwick about economic development zones play me, or tax free zones play me. Me vle, you want them push un billio, blow he come the parliament low November. Advice for state law, he come out low forum town, say, he got about forty consequential amendments where must take in place, but he no save it pass low November. So mere one are example, no process where. He affect them a speed, blow you may want them push more bills, blow he control the parliament. He got onarvula act two, low side blow Van Aipo, and me low trademarks, geographical indications. Got one arvula important bill, low Van Aipo, where you want them, and me come out also one, one unit where operate low one order no more, when minister assign, and me come on fully fledged, start a three body from interest. Low same, for example, one specific interest, and me cover, blow you me overseas, blow protect them, all name, with them all species, blow cover, blow you me. Geographical indications builder, you may hope, say, by seven make him through the parliament, low this session, or this session. One other reason, I mean honorable member, I think, one other reason, and me process bargain, process play me bargain, so. And there's some low legislation where me hope say, he satisfy him question where member, honorable member, and me ask him. Low side blow human resource, all acting positions, so say me tell him earlier, chairman, me two, also marketing guard, the general, and me got on low acting position lowe. Me raise him issue here, one example, me got on low Tana, me meet with them chairman, low tourism council lowe, them officer in charge, low tourism office lowe. You may open him office lowe, blow decentralize him. One position where me outstanding long time, and me blow product development officer. Me sit down with them chairman, with them officer in charge lowe, ask him from one name, you know appointed quick time. Me stop low Tana, me give instructions, he come low HR office, no pleasure, with them executive officer, no pleasure, say, you want them PSC confirm from one name, position there, you know appointed quick time from. Quality, blow all bangalos play me lowe. Quality, blow all products, with them all services lowe, all transport providers, all tour operators, all waiter, all housemaids, only keep him all bangalos, all operator, blow all bangalos, all owners. Reason, well, he give him, and he say submission, he call it PSC finish, you may stop wait it, blow let me make him appointment. Me command up, no pleasure, me make one instruction, blow transfer him one staff, he got on. Low make him walk here, low walk with them all, all operators lowe. And as of this time, got on low Tana low last month, you may still low acting appointment, you may still wait, blow PSC formalize him appointment, low position there. Although all letters only conduct, all meetings only taken place, and with them respect, low commission, and me one constitutional body. Constitution also, you may away, tell him say, you may no interfere, low how commission he carrom out work. As far as possible, you may push him commission, blow clear him all outstanding issues, blow lacking appointments here. And some only blow acting director, with them acting DCH, blow ministry, blow trade. All positions here, only stop under low discipline process, back again, and me one process where you may save it push no more, blow ask him double commission. Independence, blow commission under low constitution, and me one issue where you may fright two, blow allegations, play interference, pushing you want them influence him commission, or ask him, blow hurry up, blow make him one appointment, so. You may stop low double commission, independence, blow play carrom out work, or appointments where me should make them, and me rest entirely low commission chairman. Me hopes he may answer him question, blow member, low side blow lacking appointments more, especially position, blow acting director, blow department, blow industry. Process, blow discipline, he complete, as of yesterday, director, and me take him back position there. You may wait, low commission, and me give one final decision, low position, low director general, blow ministry, blow trade, more commerce. And low process, low discipline where he go, you may save it say code case start, process block out. You may want them tell him, no pleasure, honorable chairman, with them all members. I think me also, one former DCH, low justice, me recommend them, blow plan them, please, low pass, say. Set them up one specific parliamentary committee, blow it deal with them sector, blow low with them justice from. Illegals, and independence, blow judiciary, and me respect them. The government, and me parliament, and me allocate them money, more government is set in policy direction, low access, low justice, more quality, low justice, but. Judiciary, and me operate independently, all rules, only government conduct, low lawyers, with them on courts. You may save it stop, low watch him game no more, suppose me say that tell him also. Interference, low how, you want them code, he hurry up, and me rest entirely low administration, low courts, with them chief justice. So issue, blow appointments, acting DCH, blow trade, with them acting director. Acting director, he director proper, he take him back position there yesterday. You may stop wait, blow code case he finish, blow position, blow DCH, save it come clear. So what time DCH proper, he save it come back, low work clear. Me hopes he may answer him question, blow low side blow delay, low come decisions. All come decisions where only affect them funding, more implementation, low projects, where stop under low ministry, blow trade, honorable chairman, and me. Back any fault town low process where, come, you make them decision finish, you may want them implement them, you may stop low process, play implement them. Parkhouse, low Santo, for example, you may supervise them, only dick them, all trench finish, plus start lay more blocks, process low finance, he delay. He start low finance, you may meet with them, you all letters only go, meeting with them DCH, more director, all director, blow finance, you may frustrated, you may push. They all boundaries, blow responsibility with them work. You may low trade, you may save it cost of funds, or you may ask him, low DCH, or you may write officially, blow please release him more funds. Low value addition, low parkhouse, blow all feasibility studies, low economic zones play me, low international fishing port play me. Low value addition, blow it is said, only design, only implemented, you may want them make him full up, low something ever, bargain. Come, and me make them decisions, and blow tell them before, low house committee, a chairman, full up low on conditions here, only no implemented from, you may wait, low funds, low only release. Low side blow tourism bargain, by all farms, with them ability, blow you may take him care, low Kakai, all needs, blow Caribbean cruises, was he start. Briefly, blow tell him also, chairman, with them honorable members, say. One new direction start taking place, low ministry, blow trade. Time, me got on, also marketing DG, me ask him, one analysis, low trade performance, low Vanuatu, low last ten years, two thousand fifteen, cause seven twenty five. Analysis, low data, where he come out, and me show him, low you me say. And prime minister, with them deputy prime minister, to will have been brief learn here, me personally brief him to low, with them minister, play me town, say. Trade performance, play me low last ten years, low data where KIMs, low side blow VAMU, only Kim Lemmy, only analyze him, you me. Under low MSG, under low PESAPLAS, under low WTO, you may operate low deficit, low last ten years. You may import them more than you may produce locally, low save it export them, so. Shift low focus, where start taking place now, low ministry, blow trade, you me advise a minister with them, come. You may shift him focus, and all CEOs, with them all directors, where he stop with them, and now here chairman, only carry one instruction, let me low last weekend, say. We want them data, low every investment, where come money, make them, low each agencies, where you vle had them, low last ten years. Low marketing, low tourism overseas, low US, come down, low Pacific, Australian, New Zealand, no mere. Every data, all investments, where government, you make them, low you vle, low last ten years. We want them, you vle, produce him results, more return, low investment. Number, blow visitors, where he come out, reason, low ask him, data there, low every agency, say, me blow. You may put them low screen, by save it help, low key in one direction, blow where place policy should shift, he call her. From chairman, you may talk to call, say no more, he could be decisions, blow data where. Decisions where you may, you may make them, blow change your policy, and me must be base law evidence. Evidence, and it must be base law evidence, blow data and statistics, and. Sorry, suppose I may talk long one now, Mr. Chairman, where one new, one new direction start taking place now here. You may want them look, you may want them look, performance, low Vanuatu, low side blow trade in services, same honorable member, he talk about. Trade in services here, basically, and me do something, low suppose me say that tell him also, two main, two main, two main sector, blow economy, blow you me. Trade in services, low tourism, and two low VIPA, low side blow investments, where you me are in earlier. So to la area here, you may ask him data, data is stop coming, tourism, we provide them, play minister, low last ten years, and me interesting, blow look data where he come in. All narvula agencies only provide them, and data here, by help him, you me blow, save it come back, low government, blow tell them say, low last ten years, performance play me also one here. Apart, low national trade performance play me, where me talk about earlier. So all data here, by he come in, by help him, you me honorable member, blow you may save it provide them some new direction, low where place. Resources should go, one name specific detailed activity, which them plan day he come out, low infrastructure, low islands, low side, low tourism. Data here, by save it help him, you me, blow you me save it provide them some new direction, low minister, with them, low cabinet, more, low you me, low government, low. Where place, you may should shift him focus play me, after low last ten years, with them twenty five. Activity is start taking place now, but bargain, and me take him time. Low side, low VIPA, me save it answer them briefly, he got one project, where he been taking place finish, only call him. One, one joint interface system, he got three agencies, VIPA, and he got one fully fledged online system, he stop now here, where all investor, all save it stop overseas. Only completing application, low geta online. Even approval, only printing certificates, low geta and system here, me been, we been personally go visiting, when me look him, how we me work. And by CEO, low VIPA, so we explain him a little more detail. But now here, he got narvula second phase, blow project here, you may want him engage him same company. Paper is start before council of ministers this week, suppose only approve him, only approve him a company where central tender support, and me approve him minister, play me carrom out exercise here. By chairman, by you may move on low next phase, where about narvula fourteen agencies, blow government, where he provide them service where. Honorable member, and me ask him, police save it come inside low system here, blow and me help, blow fast track him all applications. And we help, blow deal with them all applications, blow all new investors, with them all existing investors too. At the moment, phase one, and me handle them three agencies no more. Where only work with them investment promotion agency, customs, with them VIPA. And second phase, where suppose come, and me approve him, we endorse him decision, low central tender support, where he pass finish. By you may move on low phase two, where by him he help low. Bring him on narvula fourteen, twelve to fourteen, our agencies, blow government, only come inside. And by all process here, but eventually, everyone is save it happen online. But then me take him time, say, honorable member, by take him time, and implementation blame, so score, and me approve him, CTV approve finish. Implementation by him he start, and he should help low. He do our work with them lengthy periods, where full up companies, only want them renew, or new ones, where he come in. Only must call all different agencies here, you me carry, oh geta, he come together. But for VIPA itself, and me system blame, and me operation will finish, where close up every approval, just save it carry him online no more, all payments play you, all approval play you, save it carry him online, and. Was he need him more clarification, by me invite him, CEO, blow me Pablo, he give him hammer, low you me. I think, Mr. Chairman, me hopes he may address him some low issues where honorable member, he receive, suppose he no clear, by. And we got all members, blow team, Mr. Obseb, low help low respond, thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, DCH low give him respond. Let me give him time, low CEO, blow VIPA, long make him supplementary, thank you.
Okay, thank you supplementary, low one name one DG, and me, and me tell him, yes, me, I think good news, let me everyone, low question where he stop. One stop policy, blow government, where he me long, long time, you start talk about, but you may never implement them. Okay, good news, let me everyone, say, you may now, you may start them, you may progress them, two phase blame. Phase one, and me feasibility, feasibility study, where he complete, and then second phase, now, and me implementation. Start off with them are three key agencies, VIPA, FABC, with them customs. You may start, low you may engage with him now, MOUs only been signed, and then by development, and we go. Hopefully, launching, blow three varla agencies here, and by him he start low early, low next, next year, first quarter. You may start thinking, blow you may witness him here now, eventually, you may start over with him here, and then gradually, you may save it expand them. Blow you may include them all narvula key agencies, where the frontline, blow all registration, blow all businesses. Think, we want them tell him, let me everyone, say, although project now here, and me focus mainly low registration, blow all foreign, foreign investment. But low projector, thinking blame him, blow by him, he also include them all domestic businesses, play me too. So again, scope blame him, long term blame him, more sustainability blame him, and me big one, more him, challenging too. But I think here now, you may want them, say, by him, you look, this is where direction, where you want them take him. You may make use, low digital capability, where you me got now, blow make him say, all processes, all fashion, blow work, play me low government, and me easy, more, and me faster too. Thank you.
Thank you, CEO, you may give him time, low target up, low tourism, blow make him supplementary, low side the tourism, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, low question, he come, low member, blow ifate rural. Low side, blow project for the project, blow Royal Caribbean, low Lelepa Island, yes, and me one project where, I think, low earlier this year, prime minister, honorable prime minister, with them. For Caribbean, he be became some announcement, so you may to start look, look, low one investment, low almost six billion VATU. Me one big for the project, and probably the largest single tourism projects in Vanuatu so far, since independence, and we come. Project here, by him, he start low one phase, blow two years, where by him, he start low twenty twenty five, cause seven twenty six, completion, blow construction, then you may start low hope, say, by low twenty twenty seven. By he save it got launching there, or opening blame him. Since low time here, got one government task force, also my chairman, member, and Mr. Baskin, say, how we, are we ready? So he got one special government task force, where me set up, inside low task force here, he got member, blow ifate rural, them two stop inside low him. Myself is director of tourism, with them CEO of Vanuatu Tourism, too, member of task force here. Project here, by him, he require him a lot of engagement, low private, low public sector. But me respond also, low side blow public sector, low you me low government, me flash start work with them, geta, low environment, with them for sure developing unit. But make sure, I say, project here, and me comply with them all the requirements, and regulatory requirements, blow government, low Vanuatu. And then you may look, look to low side, blow side, where he come, low construction phase, how now, by me save it support them employment. More sourcing of materials, whereby me save it carry him low Vanuatu, more abroad. Project here, by him, before I start with, low work plan there, with them Royal Caribbean too, blow develop them all special terms of reference, blow geta, low one name now, needs, blow all geta. Also, you may save it, project here once, by him, he come into place, by him, he start receiving about three thousand to five thousand passengers. And me, I have me one big for the project, where by him, he need him full up, low side blow Kakai. Food supply, food and beverage supply, biosecurity too, by him, he come inside. But by him, he also provide an opportunity, blow employment, and employment, by him, he carry full up in Vanuatu, for you may got skills here, we stop low in country, blow me save it help him. I think you may start look, look, low over hundreds of people to be employed on site, so by everything here, by him, he come into place, once we like finalize them all regulatory requirements. I think this morning, Vice President of Royal Caribbean, and me meet with them prime minister, low office blame, blow recommitting bargain, government, low engagement blame, low side blow project here. I think me, before I start hope, say, by low few days, and me come, by you may save it got further developments, blow look, look, say, how now, are we ready? So I provide them all, all elements where you need, blow project here, and me, and me carry them. In addition to, by him, he no forget them, me look full up questions, and me come to, low side blow two operators, how by this save it benefit low project here. Two activities, low Lelepa Island, by him, also include him, you me, where he stop running all business, play you me low pleasure, so you may like work plan there, with them Royal Caribbean, but make sure, say, he got inclusion. Low new Vanuatu business, probably part inside of two activities, blow Lelepa, whether I mean on site, the island itself, or I may come to the mainland. In terms of some work, where people like start at the take him, with them all geta, Vanuatu Tourism Office, and me sign them one memorandum of understanding, with them Royal Caribbean. Blow look, look, low side of one consumer research, blow look, look, what them now needs, where customers play, or list a look, look, low carry, or expect them low Vanuatu. And I mean, by me drive them to interest, blow geta, he come, no pleasure, blow me like save it prioritize them, where now, and me help him, low product development, low tourism. So I think, I mean, some low updates, we may save it give him, but we, we look forward to provide further updates, once they become available.
Thank you, target up, low tourism, and me can time, low DCH.
Thank you, Chairman, I think one important piece, play information no more. Low committee, I will him, no question, where honorable member, blow ifate rural. He raise him, low side, blow positions, blow acting DG, with them acting director, blow tourism. It touch him small, say, on process, blow discipline is start co. Just play information, blow committee no more. He got one report, blow ombudsman, he been come out, we recommend them, say, DCH proper, with them director proper, blow industry, so lean no more, hold them positions, low public offices. Very poor, blow ombudsman, by, and me, we have him story, and say, me fright, no releasing, from process block out, is start coed, so. He no save it, which one, to la independent, which one, no independent, low who, by. Ombudsman, low opinion, blow me, with them respect, honorable chairman, ombudsman, he should make him work, blame, releasing report blame, while process block out, is start coed, but. Only fright, say, by evidence, he conflicting each other. But appointment let up, low director proper, we take him back office of yesterday. Public service, he reinstated man, but he tell him, low number four item, low let up blame, say, pay. Case play, we start low police station, or list I investigate him, so. So things are important, blow committee, I will, low to la information, and I'm, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, DCH, and him time, low honorable member, blow Penticos.
Thank you, Chair. While you missed up, you make at CEO, blow Bureau of Standard. While I'm now, all policies, me tell him also, from once, you may go make him groundbreaking, he happen, low Santo. You make at all farmers, shy look low the pole, I think, he compose low eighty percent. Low all, all M P S, I think, most low geta, me, oh, what I wish to say, it low not, all rurals. So when I'm not suppose, CEO, blow Bureau of Standard, is have it come, blow help him, no more from, while you make at all view, I saw this. Or man, I follow me meet to the live stream, blow ask him, say, when I'm now. Reasoning or policy behind low, no matter where DCH come, tell him what. Finish, he delay low some, thinking we start between finance, but when I'm now, could la achievement, why happen after low accomplishment, low house, yeah, or not. Or also, you may say, say, by you like, also move to, go low islands, blow put them all, parkhouse, thank you.
Thank you, honorable member, you may give him time, low CEO.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, honorable member. Yes, I think, I mean, tell him, I'm saying, he missed up, listen, low question, all the response we come. And as a honorable member, I tell him, say, time, I mean, stop, blow save it, low another four years, and look no delivery. Same institute, tell him, minister, is the come, with on your the direction. And also, I'm data is stop, think before we come, low question, response, data is stop, we show him, low you miss here for the last ten years. You missed all low deficit, and it depend, low one perspective, you take him. Low one perspective, by you may tell him, I'm saying, say, no, you mean low Vanuatu, you mean only more current, blow you me. You may got good life, life is good no more, no got problem. But suppose you look, look, low narvula perspective, low trade deficit, simple, say, yes. You mean only more, all current, pay low power, blow money, power, blow business, you must have low zoom out. And through the day is, thank you, low policy will it pass, so I'm, member, tell him. You may go, you may open them, you may them current, for example, parkhouse, parkhouse, so I'm, but the member, is start low M P C. Few weeks he pass, me vle, to to plant it. And me tell him, look there, say, you may got land of policy, pay problem, blow you me, low country, by you may say, run him, to my swale animal. You must only one must time, you run a one, you may hold him, and then, by you make him, you may contact him. While you're a policy, will it could. Now, he stop, so I'm, DCH, tell him, you may stop focus, low, blow actually trend, blow decrease in trade here. You may put them value addition, value addition, low raw product, you me. Raw product, like, gotcha, and also, I'm trend, who tell him, and maybe data here, data, blow last ten years, and me figure, I swear, I'm say. Raw product, is stop, I'm say, me, value addition, and me small, no, pay value, low to la, low money, call the save, it's a magnet. Minimum one, and minimum, say, you me increase in value addition small, by economic limit, chance small. And parkhouse, also, I'm test, low some data, some, some news. Then, we look, we got one condition, we come out, condition fifty one, where me man, did them ministry, blow direct Bureau of Standard, blow set them up, pull parkhouse. And you may pick at Sam finish, one, I mean, low, low federation, the challenge, you may, but there is, say. You may must meet him international standard requirement, you know. You mean, I'm say, infrastructure, you mean, send them Kakai, them process, you may process them all Kakai, you must stop, international standards, and then, Bureau of Standard, he come, man, say, them, and. Low till I, you may pin co town, low V C P N, you may pin implement them first condition, we tell him, say. No matter V C P N, in no rate, be, by you make him, you operation all. And I mean now, low, low, low first direction, we come out, you may got on, you may make them, now here, you may stop, low nampa. Four export, low container, first export, low container, call New Zealand. You me, low last week, you me carry small, low, low Tiwari Island, you sell low Santo, call Maivu, carry low Tana, you carry small, low Penticos. And when you make him, you may save it, you may control, make it there, from you may meet them all standards. And standards, and then, Bureau of Standards, look, look them, so I'm, by you me look, low Australia, New Zealand, he drew. Government start, all department, pay card, all independent party, well, national standard party. And now, we got a no, they regulate them export import. But low, I'm probably, you say, low policy here, while you missed, I want them, parkhouse, low V C, is start run small. By you missed, build them, low Santo, Santo, big capacity, same model, you may carry one company, low Australia, Tinsel. Where, and then, market, it tell him, you miss it, you vle, through the days, you vle, no pin, save it, succeed, low export, from where. Then, we want, then, we want infrastructure, is start, low camp, low set if I'm, say, ready for export. You look, look, got on, low cement, you look, look, low wall, and me, you make him wa, and me, you make him wa. So market, no, he says, system, you miss it, you vle, he is some product, yeah, no, from him, European standard, and me Australian standard. Then, when he come, low set if I'm, you vle, is start long, international standards finish. And minimum one, and minimum, say, suppose, I mean, one, I mean, so one embassy. Oh, the embassy, low, say, you start no more, you start low, there are triple, Vanuatu, they start on site, they start low, there are triple, narvula, country, I finish. Kakai, say, ma, and me, low, international standard, parkhouse here, Kakai, start site no more, time, start on site, and me, he say, pro, simple, international standard finish. Meet them requirement, blue co. Same model, yeah, by you make him, low Tana, you make him, low Malacoolah, low, make him, say, he save it. Production capacity, he save it, make, when I make, at them demand. And maybe one, number two. Pose, you may give me some figure, I think, say, when they give me some figure, low, see, I figure, you may give him, was the me, low M P C. Taro, now, you may make him, and you say, make him taro, let's say, flow one hectare. Pose, where you follow them all standard distance, where on manager plan, no one meter. You should have plan in ten thousand taro, and set low one hectare. Low one hectare, yeah, pose, where you plan, low, now, low price, you less, I make him. You sell, he got them Australia, now, I mean, vle, open a one, you la market, now here, well, he pin come, is the me, you make him one scope. You sell low five hundred VATU, then, we got them, low, low, wolf no more, low wolf. Now, he stop, he got all, he ask him, forty container, low one money. And low forty container, you may save it, say, roughly inside, by you may get, roughly six thousand taro. Roughly, me, by me eight to twelve ton, so you multiply, by five hundred, yeah, by you find him, say. Low forty container, low one, yeah, yeah, by you carry two billion, two billion, low two, met taro no more, with them quantity, yeah. Ale, pos, you me per came town, hundred fifty, by you may, by low formal, low parkhouse, hundred fifty VATU. So total, low overall money, yeah, by me five hundred million, hundred million, call low formal, another hundred fifty, my logistics no more, camion, processing. And then, another five hundred million, after low two hundred VATU, yeah, now, you may save it, look them, yeah. By him, he call low costly operation, low parkhouse, more, by him, now, by, now, he, we, he stop, on them, set them up, me, low private partnership, act there, we been pass him, yeah. And then, by start with them, company, we run him parkhouse. Low, he say, you may make him, V C P N, you run him, yes, and now, the parkhouse, you want them, make him, say, pa. All company, who got expertise, finish, low, we, only extend them, no, we come, we shall run him, my expertise, them. Low, at least, he profitable, low one partnership, after, he will, I know them. And, and then, low another five hundred million, they probably, to, on a, share them. When I'm, we good, the man, two billion, he come, I say, they come, for me, receive, yeah. And then, I pay make him, trade deficit, you may go. I think, and now, and me model, you must start, hold them, direction, you may make him, work on it, export is start, and recycle there now. And me, small component, blow big, low economic, policy, yeah, where got all, he met it, he must start work them too. Me believe, say, you mean, low the pole, he call it V C, you may call from one, policy, yeah, now, low it is said, yeah. And now, and me, big, I've, yeah, no blame. But, say, I think, before meeting, say, I'm now, I'm save, and sorry, I'm post, fed a question, by you may come, oh, low.
One more missave before me kim law registrar. You make a tovala amendments where is that copy for come law week here. No site no trademarks for them copyright. And two narvula important bill where is the law process. No site no geographical indications and specifically no protect them or specific species no cover blue you me. And hopefully bill here he come law parliament law one law session here we start come. And two narv one me law site law institution where vanai poya. I mean one them say me can on fully fledged a statute three body. Now here you operate under law one order no more place where car more good all functions play here. But by me kim law registrar law vanai poob law me say where con no detail law response law and sub no member. Geographical indications bill here time by come law parliament. I mean purpose play me specifically protect them all species with them all places or locations where they come out there. Locally more internationally. From once you me register and issue no copyright with them all trademarks. Once you register no place here, me recognize no place to a law house law registrations overseas to international level. So I may ask him law register, he explain him all no place here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Tichy, me give him time law registrar.
Thank you Chair, thank you Honorable Member, the reason that in very important question. Pam tell him most of them say pam start but tell him most of them say you me one import country. You may depend plant the law IP law different countries or threat which was the coming. But importantly, law from what you me research and knowledge and expression of culture. Where me all asset to you me man from what to so question raise me, 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 me. Very important because me all issues where it been stop happen, law misappropriation, law. Trust and names play you me where me out of the country and then me call another country. No context, no question where me raise me, say me one case. Where me been happen law on company overseas. Pam start pro tell him most of them say law IP laws premium law trademark patent with them designs a cattle process is stop inside. Pam face when tell him most of them say all IP rights, me all territorial rights. You must apply come law from what to. Or you want entrepreneur from what to, you apply come law is to protect them. Enforcement play me is a with you law territory no more, or call them territorial rights. All process where me law law patent trademark with them design. They got a special provision where stop inside where me talk about intelligence knowledge and expression of culture. Suppose one trademark, one design, one patent, and me come out here of the table, law obviously me process him. Suppose got elements for trust and knowledge especially borongo. By obvious, he got the process is stop inside. By my script call law Malphate Maori. But ensure that the applicant where me apply play protect him that name, he must cut one. All owners, all must be consent. We must cut one equitable agreement in place plus certain the benefits suppose me using the cost of trade, the commission. And all process here it been self cut them law premium only been pass. And me tell him thank you law wisdom law legislators premium law that time two thousand, two thousand three. Let take into importance of this important elements premium law trust and knowledge or incorporate them, you call a formal IP system. Okay, time me come law question law. Honorable Member, every one issue where pam tell him most of them say all cover premium time only export. He call law US market. Some law company law only capitalize, no cover premium. And then only. Come law register and name your borongo law US patent office. Obviously, me been come across issue here law last year and then only turn to both them place suppose he got any room inside law. Process play US, law from what was a state, he must have a challenging decision if we was, he got all opposition bill here to stop. And him come of find mouth say at the time of complaining been raised, opposition bill here play me say play play law abuse him. Kim me lapse finish. And me come say that trademark have existed also in borongo. And me met a crime issue to how all warriors only start stealing more trust and knowledge premium without prior form consent especially come back law. Council of chief premium of Penticos, he got plant issues where him be raised. So he got all, he got a loss where is time place suppose me remember two thousand years, three, four years back, he been cut one, law he been pass to protect them. All expression of culture play you me what them trust and knowledge. Law he been pass finish and is standing law Ministry of Justice, law culture. And work he be stop bring build them up infrastructure play. And pam tell him most of them say he got room stop a location by me turn looks suppose where you must have find one road bargain, you must have a. Apply play, you must have a strike him out law, no news because he got all crumbs too, you say. Apply law, the process law, you say remove man trademark law system suppose where, you know, use for the market for so long. So thank you, Honorable Member, you raise him that very important issue. He got to work about it by me fellow work about them law look look bargain. And suppose he must have a cut room, you must have a apply from no news, by him say. Because you may understand himself, cover premium, time all export go law. That's all he a capitalize them, play make a valid condition, only put them label them law, trademark them, borongo. Thank you.
Thank you, Registrar law respond, you may give him time law honorable member plong Malaikula.
Thank you, Chairman. Thing, I mean, me want him question no more, through the you a chairman, you call law CEO play video. One of them now purpose play me re-locate them of physical stop here law on role there law Beverly Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Member plong Malaikula. By you me give him time law CEO plong tourism. Thank you.
Thank you Chair and thank you MP law question where me come. Thing by you me everyone, you me recall them say law seventeen December time me got earthquake. Automatically office me very relocate call holiday in. Me very been stop law holiday in, cost law rent, law me very pay law holiday in, and me quite outside law cost law me follow. In preparation, law money is law January with the February, and me been cut one search, play me lookout them all properties, play me say rent them. Provided that office law me follow, by me go through law one renovation, one assessment, no confirm them say me safe. Law me was say very locate to back law building premises itself. Follow him here, plant the law all government offices, especially under law Ministry of Trade and Commerce. I think early relocate call all narvula areas, the office law, one of the tourism office with them VIPA, one of the. Foreign and Promotions Agency, me follow, you move it call law holiday in. During law time here, me very come away law on rental property, whereby the stop put them out law early rent them, and me stop law Beverly Hills. Because work law, one of the tourism office, and me no play deal with them destination, me will have a deal outside. So therefore, me very set them up Travel Information Centre, where me visit information services, and me relocate it come law number two area. So anyone who you want them secure room services play car them or even tourists. Play secure room services, play tourist information, and me stop law located law number two area, law you me workhouse. Me very like cut one rental agreement with them, or get a law you me workhouse, me very must pay rental no place here. Finish, me very also pay rent law holiday in law time here. And given law here me very need law, me very one big flat team. Me very like had over law twenty-five, call us up thirty staff. Me very like had some changes law here, and now me very like had less than thirty staff. So me very relocate call Beverly Hills, agreement play me follow law Beverly Hills, now me go cast him December no more. Me very just recently put them out one expression of interest, he come out law money is law July. Law renovation, and me go head down law office law me follow. And law money is law November, December, me very stop, make him slow relocation he go back. By January two thousand twenty-six, me very should go back law office law me follow. Base law assessment, we both New Zealand, with them our private contractor, he car more, law confirms office say me safe, he tell them so office say me safe. So by me follow with them office law VIPA, with them one of two immigration services issued by two thousand twenty-six, look look he stop, so me very relocate to back law. Town law Main Street, law Portilla.
Thank you Thomas, CEO plong tourism law respond, you may give him time law honorable member plong Penticos.
Thank you Chair, one more time, block give him. One of them now all challenge law, you me law office play video, Chamber of Commerce, VIPA. You must have a same with them ministry law trade, so. Cuff man machinery all along, and narv la pitch at we, no, we just come back here after. Thank you, question no more.
Thank you, you may give him time law Tichy.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman. Me understand him question law, Honorable Member correctly, all challenges where, all agency, all stuff face him law government machinery. Chairman, me one big law question. You must always say, while one one agency, so he got all business plan law, law work law here, only got specific budgets, law work law here. Government machinery, eh, start law top, right at the top, he come town, cast him last one town. Eh, cast him law you me no place here law parliament, cast him law executive, and law government, cast him law judiciary. Specifically, all main agencies where it touch him. You me where, law sector where you me operate here, I think main challenges, and me all process. Process law bureaucracy, law current more decisions, more once decisions only done, law follow up, law. Implement them all decisions, and then issue law finances too. And one, Honorable Chairman, may suppose me say where tell him no place here. And me issue law payment system, play you me law government. You me, by you me celebrate them centenary, I mean sorry, fifty years play independence, by. LPO system play me, where you me start run them now here. You me run them, I think close up go back as far as close up time play independence, few years after that, you me car them system here. Process here, while he got reasons, play why you me maintain them. So see me look example law, family play me, only call law R C, only come back. Police service why pay him cut, play get a law, on cashier, law boom machine, transaction is taken place. Payment out law account play, me go direct law, law supplier. You me law LPO system play me with them technology. Me me law be from the fuller place, Honorable Chairman say. Once one finance manager, he committing one LPO, law one department, or law one agency, law government, or law one ministry. Funds he should come out no place here, got checklist, play make him sure he comply with them process. Once he clear them law point there, transaction is should taken place, he go direct law account law. Buy out them technology where you me cut today. And one other challenge, play answer him question play me. Another challenge, me play, follow my law LPOs, taking time law driver, law messenger, sometime all staff only massage law office. Must go come back with them photocopy. And me, me one, one big challenge and two narv one, I think from reasonable say. Cash flow play me, Ministry of Finance, he must control him good, narv big one I, me play release law funds, law, all projects have taken place. And me, you me just, me just raise him, me here law, all challenges where all agencies will stop face him. Narv one, me stop talk law get all time, also new team leader say. Focus play you must clear. All issues must clear, look back, no mirror, no data, no last couple of years he come, so see need play change him direction. Must change him direction from you me no say stop become same something, the last forty years, and you be expect him results play it different. He suppose he need play, you me must change him system, law results only change, by you me must make him an. Now, Honorable Chairman, I think largest issue where all agencies only face him apart from internal issues play get a. And me bureaucracy and more law, law machinery, law government. Me hope say me, me enough, law question where MP raise him. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Thomas, Tichy law respond, I think you make a few more minutes stop. Make him long table honorable members, those who want to get any more narvula question, play ask him, honorable member plong Penticos.
Thank you Chairman, I think by last one. Play help him, you me know law one question where car million, no site no cooperative. And em here, one recommendation where I think me very table if I am a through the Chairman. And me, also you tell him, and me bureaucracy all department. For one clear pitch, last week, director law agriculture is down law same table where you very is down there. And let me tell him, law me very say price, law Cobra, petanets law. From what to, especially law Santo, and me eighty thousand, but the day me find one pitch, I way me nineteen thousand. So, but he could, play you very tell him, play make him say me very got all thing thing where play you very say put them so. While law, office play you me no more law cooperative, say. Law Cobra producer land bring, Cobra, Cobra producer land bring. Cobra is stop now here law eighty thousand, where director law agriculture, been come tell him no place here last week. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Member. You may give him time long honorable member plong Fati, Fati Rovol.
Thank you, Chairman. Question play me by, eh, me one recommendation no more, Tichy, go come you, Chair come you, more call law. Director plong tourism with them CEO plong tourisma. Me, me like him talk talk with, I very tell him about promoting yacht market. Cruise exhibition with them all super yacht. You me talking about change of direction, nah? Then you me rely plant the law aviation, all get a, you come law through the airline. And all get a, you come through law, people are cruise liner. That you me face him all natural disasters, or even man-made disasters, like the liquidation of urban water. And me, and me affect me, me everyone, nah? So, me, me like him thing thing, I play me start law diversify, change him direction, and become more resilient, nah? So I think focusing on the yacht market, the super yacht and the cruise expertise, he me one good for that thing thing. And me know them talk talk law CEO say, on narrow call it play me, law region, that will look, only come start even so, go, only expand them law get a. So me, and follow them talk talk law, MP play malakula. Me, me stop on them, Chairman, through you, no committee, go law director plong tourism and Tichy. Say, could play you very make him some proposal, something thing, through the minister, he come law government. And in the parliament, play recommend them, you me must invest heavily law on board of coal here. You me build them on new treaty, on new roofs, and me pop law resilient there, building resilient infrastructure. So, so you me diversify away law traditional mode law visitor, where me come through the airline or cruise liner. When they affected, in a suit affect them yacht, with them cruise expedition, will you continue block come law, all island play be. Block him, make him say, you me everyone, you benefit here, I mean no, Fati, no more, more Santos. So, so the key message here is that, if you see a labor journey there, and you want to create, create your proposals to government. Play you me say fight them, go out and budget, play build them all to here. Play make him say, time, Fati, more Santos affected. Cruise expedition, no yacht, any one no more, no island play me. And all get a, no come, no come, kakaile hotel or resort, or come, go, nice beach, or nice river, more rich culture play me. I think me a no small contribution play me. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, you may take him say me, me one comment, law honorable member. I mean, take him last question, law honorable members, suppose one to get any last question, play give him. Honorable member plong Santorol.
Good, thank you, Miss Mylan. I mean last one. Me interest much law cooperative. The day to, me come law final more, he got the farmers cooperative. Me want to mask you now, law director play me say, he got, we stop finish effectively. When me look on, already no more plant the, play, farmers cooperative, he got, oh, he exist finish. Suppose he got, and good, suppose not, and you answer them, the day finish, but tell them say. You me got a law visits, or establish law provinces, play me go what call look, play, since you stop, me want to ask him again. Thank you Thomas.
Thank you, Honorable Member plong Santorol, you may give him time long. Tichy.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, thank you law question law, Honorable Member, by me ask him law director law cooperatives play, enlighten me, me law answer there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank, thank you, I think very slim, and then tell him thank you lot that questions. So far, as of last year, we since play you me law cooperative, and me more, play you me build them more, no site no agricultural cooperatives. And me been stop, he been cut finish, he been stop. So far, as of, as you missed out of talk, him make a fifty-two producer cooperative through one draw of the country. Okay, fifty-two producer cooperative here, he got eleven Lotava, fourteen Los Eva, twenty-two La Malamba. Three La Penama, they got one La Samba. After he got. One Lotorta. As you missed out of talk, me very finalize them registrations, law, fourteen new law co- producer cooperative. La Samba Province, and fourteen new law one here, La Samba Province here. You me take, you me, and me establish, he got La South, every, every, every corner of La Santo here. But he got inland do La Santo. The reasons why, you me got here me, I think, the reasons why you me, you me focus more law here me, from fishing. Law office, all part of the law cooperative now, fishing now, and me play me come back with them all pack house. When me tell him thank you law government, where me say we car them, but the day you say to pot all pack house. But here we fishing, law, the part of the cooperatives, where you me start them, play me try them. And em now, we build them first one, or sell them, she'll blow, Phibias, and me paint them, first one law. Law area, play fishy pen, from all the cooperative business network. The reasons why, you me want to, I think you could, play me explain them, the reasons why you me, you me, you me start me focus law here me, from say. You me, you need to got competitive advantage of a law practice, play me do. Him do not got competitive advantage, law rise, but them didn't fish. The moment him to start a more rise, more didn't visit come, by you me continue, but start a division, or sell what it see it there. But at the same time, you me, you me also support them, all consumer cooperatives play you me. Law, only, only also, you me also look look a lot of, strengthen them a lot of, from policy, come, or sell all marketing outlet, law, all producer cooperatives play you me. So hemina, and me, team team, team team, we stop. So currently, with a new law policy, obviously, I start look look, law work with them, you me law internal office. Especially with them closely with them all area councils, play you me set them up. One of them, what you call them cooperative area enterprise, where by him, he come, or sell all secondary cooperatives. And play make him say, hemi empower them too, or hemi connect them, all people with them all area councils, play make him show. All people, play you me, you know, work all about, petal, he come, only car them all services, law one locations, and that locations, he must be one strategic locations. And not only to that, one will sound into, and me play, you me make sure. Say economic participation, play members, all members, play one particular cooperative, so if I want money. So so far, you me law cooperative, you make sure that one cop, one producer cooperative. By hemi know, come let them, you me say, by me me one on ten product, no, me very start look look, law, maximum only four. ID for council, one, two, three, maximum only four, play make, I'm sure that you must have a, you must have a supply on market. Or you must have a sustain on market, or you must have a supply on industry, and then you be holding that for continuity purposes. So em now, and me, when I'm a stop, so me want them go, also, tell them to, you me that. Out of four hundred and twenty-four cooperatives play me, even all get a, we already tell cooperative, or you list that talk about, all members play, and me all farmers. So me very look look to, all get a, play make sure, say, you me strengthen them a lot of, for you say, you say this, that be someone cooperative. And that cooperative, by me say the function, suppose, you know, got interactions between members with them cooperative play. Thank you Thomas.
Thank you. Thank you, character law respond, I think respond more question, law honorable member, and me come law put you me longer. And play discussion play me long this morning. Also, Chairman, one of them tell him, thank you, you me everyone, where you must have a present long today, you may come yesterday finish. Today, and me continuation, play all question more, all answer, or respond. Again, Tichy, with them directors, all managers and registrar. Law behalf law committee, me want to tell them, people, thank you, love you very la, law presence, very la, law yesterday, more long today. In a normal report, where you very be produce them, long come the parliament law this year, and me report the two thousand twenty-four. Annual report, long ministry, from place long report, where you very submitted me come. But now, committees or honorable members only teleprate, law, all issues where me arise, law report, and make him say today, you must have a. Stop or yesterday, you must stop or today, more you will have them some law question. Base law annual report, long ministry, long last year. Committee then by me, I mean I finish the place, and by me call law islands, play. And me verify some information where you me give him. And definitely by week when me come, committee by only call islands. And Tichy, with them team play you, committee want to mask him suppose by by. Because by me very call island, committee call island, by use from vehicle, law, only say we pass law some places. And definitely by by committee call Malaikula, with them Santo, law week where, and me, and me stop come. And committee want to mask him suppose, come you Tichy, suppose you say, let them one, they call it to the island here. Play on team, say we use them, or even with them officer responsible, play, only say we stop with them committee for, I think, for one week. Law ground, law, me very committees have a, ask them some question, and even law drive them. All committee, all places where committee, eh, want them go. So me stop, ask him advice or permission, you play, you say we give him long committee members. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Chairman, law. Highly nationally important committee, law economy with them foreign policy. And me bargain, may with them permission, play you, me want them tell him big flow, thank you, you, law behalf law. Team, where you come no place here, law, yesterday with them today, plus have a respond. Country play you me, and me important say, you me direct them all resources, law places where most needed, law benefit, law people play me. So, me very accept them challenge and scrutiny where committee give him. Me very accountable, law people, with them house play me, no place here. And you want them, give him assurance, law ministry, law behalf, play me, also acting director general, law request where he come. And me granted, with them permission, more one cloud heart, play work together with them. Committee here, Mr. Chairman, law scrutinize them all services where, under law ministry, delivered law to the locations where. You raise him this morning, and you me work together, by me, me very have people support them. Committee here, with them all work, play them law islands, play you me. Chairman, if I may, make a two copies, play, report, play IDF funds where. Together, eh, to law rounds one with them two law funding, one them, play me pass them law committee. And on narv la issues were erased, reports were necessary, by me very work with them support staff, law committee, law. Make him sure, say, provided, he come law, also my committee, and me request them. But bargain, Honorable Chairman, with them honorable members, and me, one privilege, plus I very appear, one good for the experience. Play look importance, law responsibility, with them accountability, more service delivery. Where people play me, expect them, law civil servants, so, me very got cloud heart, plus I very appear. And face him one questions, and listen, you must up under oath, respond responsibly, more honestly, law services where you must up deliver them. And hopefully, Mr. Chairman, by information me very provide them, suppose anything else needed by the committee. Very stand ready, play hand him over, he come you, with them honorable committee, law house here. Thank you Thomas, and may blessing, law pack out, start out to you very la, law important work, where you very start make him all time, and law, with them you me everyone. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you Tichy, law information play me, by committee, and me, by start together, play make him report after law verification visits. And by me submit them report, law scrutiny, law two thousand twenty-four annual report, you call the parliament, by me table the parliament law this, law and law here, yeah. Law November, so I think em now, and me process, at least you me say. Otherwise, me, one of them tell him, thank you bargain, you me everyone. All, yeah, offices, law ministry, law trade commerce, more never not to business, what them all honorable members do, long questions where you very. Say we ask him, law, guess play me long yesterday, more law today. He also tell him, thank you, law online viewers, where you say we join him, you me, only follow him, you me, from Torres to. Naitum, where you say we partner this live session, long scrutiny, long ministry, law. Trade more commerce, never not to business, otherwise, thank you law respond, thank you law questions, more thank you law cooperation. Long ministry, law trade and commerce, plus have a come, you very come, you very. All offices, thank you Thomas, law presence, very very, make him say, you must have a continue with them discussion as of yesterday, more today. Will you me come, long finishing more the discussion. Otherwise, thank you Thomas, me, by me invite him, Tichy, long submit him documents, he come the table. And after later, by me invite him, Tichy, with them team play you, play you must have a leave him a room.